The meeting of County Council will come to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Optional prayer, Carol.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, let us pray. Loving Heavenly Father, we come to you this hour, asking for our blessing and help us as we gather here together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work, help us to work together and encourage each other to, for acceptance. We ask that we would challenge each other to match higher and farther to the best that we can be. We ask this in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, amen.
We did have a special presentation earlier and Mel took it early because he couldn't make this particular meeting. So we'll go on with the roll call, roll call, Mr. Park, please. Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Fatika?
Here.
Dr. Faust?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Here.
Mrs. Lowell?
Here.
Mr. Rastetter?
Here.
Chairman Leon?
Here.
The hearing of the public, if somebody calls in, they're entitled to five minutes to speak. Anybody that doesn't call in is entitled to three minutes after, after this. Mr. Barnes is the first one up, who's called in. Thank you, Mr. Barnes.
Thank you, my name is Randy Barnes, I reside in Dr. Faust's district. As a reminder, I may have thanked him before, but I want to thank him publicly again because back a year ago when I brought up these irregularities on these credit card statements of the $3.49 at get-go several times a month for office supplies, he did the hard work of research and found out that was for coffee creamer and I thank him for that due diligence. I talked about this ECR, this Erie County Gaming Revenue Authority because I think there's some irregularities and we've talked about this irregularity where the Director, Mr. Wood instructed his staff on March 8th of 2017 to write a check out to him for $5,604.39 for a fall tuition reimbursement. And then forty-seven days later, we know that Mr. Wood instructed his staff to write out a check to him for $5,527 and no cents. That was for professional development. So I stand here before you tonight, in front of you seven elected officials and in front of the administration representatives and say, is this acceptable? How many other people that are funded by taxpayer money that you have oversight over, would we find this in their check records? How many people that we fund 100% with our tax money would have a credit card that they would go to Walmart twice in the same day for office supplies? Or they would go on Amazon, office supplies, Amazon, office supplies, Amazon Marketplace, all in the same month? Office supplies, office supplies, office supplies. Creamer, creamer, creamer. What else are we buying besides creamer with our taxpayers' money? But I gotta remind you, this is okay with most of the people in this room. The reason why I say that is, Mr. Wood doesn't hand out dollars, he hands out votes. When Mr. Wood stands beside a county councilperson and hands out $250,000 to the borough of Northeast, that's just not dollars, those are votes for any politician that stands in the picture. I think about Northeast and the $250,000 and I think about the Dairy Queen in Northeast that has a taxpayer-funded loan through the Erie County Gaming Revenue Authority, a Dairy Queen. Why did that happen? We've covered that. Because if you have a friend on the ECR board that owns a Dairy Queen franchise and you own a Dairy Queen franchise in Erie County, you can get the taxpayers to subsidize your loan. We had a prominent attorney write an opinion piece in the paper the other day saying how unfair the funding is for our schools. I think he was talking a lot about Erie City School District. Think about this, think about us subsidizing a Dairy Queen with our taxpayer money and the city of Erie schools, they can't afford to keep the water out of the roof. Why is it that sixty-seven counties in Pennsylvania, of those sixty-seven counties, sixty-six counties can have Bridgeway Capital come in and lend money without any taxpayers' money from that county? Why is it that only one county in Pennsylvania has to put up their taxpayer money to get Bridgeway Capital to do business in that county, supposedly? They're doing business in every county they can. They're just as exploitive as any banker, but they found someone that gave them little money and they found some politicians to stand in the picture. Those same politicians that take credit for that have to take credit for Perry Wood writing him a check out for $5,604.38 on March 8th, 2017. You have to take credit for him writing out a check on April 24th of 2017 for $5,527. You can't have it both ways. You take credit and stand in the picture in Northeast for the 250 grand given away and not take credit for allowing this man to do this, not take credit for allowing John Elliott to blow millions of dollars. You have to take credit for the good and you have to take credit for the bad. We know why Perry Wood gets away with this, because he's handing out votes, he's not handing out dollars. Hey, thank you very much.
Made it in time.
I know.
Anyone else from the public wish to be heard? Please give us your name and wherever you reside.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the County Council, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Fred Winnick. Just a couple of things I wanted to bring to your attention this evening. Earlier this evening, you guys discussed tabling this ordinance, 26, 2019 here. I'm glad that you've tabled that because I found it kind of interesting that that ordinance entailed a 16% pay raise for the planning director. And I don't know this person, just in full disclosure, I don't know the individual that sits in that seat. I found it kind of odd that we were about to vote on a 16% pay raise. That's an additional $750 a month for this individual. Must be somebody pretty special if that's even brought up or even thought about doing. The other item, I'd like to cover the sale of all of these pieces of property. As many of you may know, I do work in the real estate industry, I manage a local real estate company and I found these numbers kind of appalling. Now, I do understand, we're talking about vacant land, really not a whole lot of actual value in them, but kind of added these all up here. A total for all these parcels of land, it was $77,100 of taxable value that they're assessed at. And the back owed taxes on these properties, $36,754.55. And we've sold these properties for $2,250. It's a ninety, almost a 98% loss there between the taxable value and the taxes that we should have earned off of that. So I would urge County Council to take a little closer look at that, see if we can do a better job at selling these properties. I'm not anticipating that we're going to be able to sell some of these properties at $7,000 or $8,000, but a 98% loss seems a bit ridiculous to me on that. And I'd also like to commend County Council this evening for their conversation about the home and that you're doing your due diligence. Thank you, Mr. Anderson, for all your work that you've done on that. The numbers certainly tell a story there and it looks like we have to do a lot more studying. And I'm also glad that you brought up the issue that we need to really evaluate the assets that we have as an Erie County Council. This is something that I mentioned just a few weeks ago in our forum, Mountain District 7, so thank you for that and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the county wish to be heard? Anyone else, once, twice, third and last time? Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, would you approve the minutes from April 2nd and April 16th?
Second. Moved by Dr. Faust, seconded by Mr. Horton. Comments? Roll call. On the minutes, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Next is the County Executive, and/or her Desert Need.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'm here this evening to share a little bit on the administration perspective on Pleasant Bridge Manor East. And I think it's important that we go back a little bit and go through the timeline of when the administration started to look at this particular property. Spring of 2014, the administration, under my leadership, formed a team to look at Pleasant Bridge East before they had moved out the property. Under this committee, we had an architect, an engineer, a general contractor, a relator, and an operations and facilities person. At that particular time, they came up with three recommendations. One, to repurpose the building. Two, to tear down the building. Three, to sell the building. The administration chose to explore the option of selling the building. We did that. We listed the building back in the fall of 2017, or excuse me, 2015. We listed the building for $982,000. At that time, seven acres, a total of 14.2 acres is up there at the Pleasant Bridge East Manor site. There were no interest in buying the building at that particular time for that amount. We lowered the price several months later. Again, no interest in purchasing that particular building. We subdivided it even more into three parts. This time, we had a buyer that approached us for 4.86 acres and it was hands. And if some of you may, that sit on council, at that time I came down in January of 2017 and shared with you their proposal. It was $300,000 for the building. At 4.86 acres, we were going to retain over nine acres. It was going to work well with the layout of M&amp;L Detention Center as well as M&amp;L Shelter. At that time, council elected not to sell the building, there was no interest at that time. The administration thought that was the best option. One, we were going to stop the upkeep cost, which runs between $45,000 to $60,000 per year. Two, we're going to receive $300,000. And many of you know that when you talk about the property, you're right, it is the property, it's not the building. The property is actually worth more with the building not being there, due to the poor condition of the building. So, at that time, in the spring of 2017, led under the leadership of Mr. Fiori, he and several other council members did a study and it was a very good study. It was very comprehensive, they took their time, their due diligence, they came back with six options. One of those options was to tear down the building. The other options was looking at lease, other leased facilities, what we pay, maybe looking at combining it, was looking at repurposing it, they also explored selling it. It was a very, very good study. The administration went back and, and really looked at the study. We really wanted to see if there was any way that we could proceed with a sale of the building, there wasn't. We looked at repurposing it as far as with other departments. We started off with the Department of Health, we looked at Department of Human Services, we looked at other facilities, there just wasn't. We also looked at constructing a new facility, which based on our estimates would run about $20 million. That just wasn't feasible because, again, the cost was just prohibited and the need and demand is not there. So which brings me to today, the report that was shared here earlier. And I appreciate the work that was done by Councilman Anderson, Councilman Horton, and Councilwoman Lowell. But with all due respect, there is nothing in the report that is new from the administration perspective. What we see in the report, and we agree with the four key points that are covered, and I'll just stick with the first one, it's unacceptable not to take action. But where we differ are the studies. So the key recommendation is first of all, to do a master plan and a Erie County-owned facility inventory. First of all, we have a inventory on all the facilities that we own and that we lease and rent, so we have that, but to do a master plan, and then after that, to do another plan, master plan, just for the Pleasant Bridge Manor East campus. So that's two studies, which means that there's going to be additional costs for those two studies. Meanwhile, no one gave a timeline on how long that may take. It could take another three to five years, if it did, that's another $250,000. So here we are, the administration has done its due diligence, we definitely believe we have, we believe council has, we really do. We believe we landed on a place where we can agree that tear the building down, we're going to retain the land, and then we'll figure out the proper use based on the needs and demands. What's very concerning to the administration is the cost to the taxpayers. The cost of a study, the cost of $50,000, $60,000 each year, if we're going to expand this for another five years, that's $250,000. But then when we look at repurposing it for warehouse, $3 to $4 million, who's going to pay that? Taxpayer. Repurposing the building, $5 to $6 million, who's going to pay that? The taxpayers. Building a new building, $7 to $8 million, taxpayer, taxpayer. Ladies and gentlemen, we cannot tax the taxpayers anymore. We have to take action. We have to do it collectively. We do not believe that another study will reveal anything differently. A master plan will only delay things, only delay. At the end of the day, the administration is charged with determining the needs and demands of the property and we do that well and we have done our due diligence. We cannot sign off and write checks and at the expense of the taxpayers. So we will be back with a formal recommendation by the administration as far as a course of action. But I can share with you that it is disheartening from the administration's standpoint, these dollar figures that are being thrown around, we just cannot put it on the taxpayers and we will not. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next, Finance Committee, Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee met on Thursday, May 9th, and we present tonight, action items under New Business, A, all the way through O. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next is Personnel Committee, Mrs. Fatika.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Personnel Committee met on May 9th following the Finance Committee meeting and we put under Old Business, Item A on the agenda. That concludes my report.
Any other comments? Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I have another report. And just simply, as you had mentioned earlier, we had with us tonight Mel Witherspoon, who we honored with a citation. He had to be here earlier because he couldn't be here for the public meeting, but I did want to take a moment, so we have it in the official record of council, the citation that we had given him, and I'm not going to read it in its entirety, but would ask that we put this in the minutes. And it begins, just whereas Melvin Witherspoon, who was a transfer student and then co-captain and graduate of Gannon College, now Gannon University, Mel then went on to many years in several agencies and social services, including the GCAC and other local organizations here in Erie County. And whereas Mr. Witherspoon is now in his fourth term on Erie City Council and many other leadership responsibilities that he's had, most importantly, we honored him tonight for his work with the youth of our community, particularly with the creation of the Spoons Summer Basketball League. And whereas Mel Witherspoon has been recognized by each mayor, beginning with Mayor Tulio, all the way up to Mayor Senate, for the work that he has done in our community, particularly on behalf of the youth. And we conclude with, and I will read this, Mr. Chairman. Now therefore, we the undersigned members of Erie County Council, join a grateful community in recognizing a lifetime of contributions from Melvin Witherspoon to the citizens, especially the children and families in all of Erie County, through the selfless efforts, particularly in the Spoons League and his willingness to share his gifts and time throughout Erie County and different organizations. And tonight, this 14th day of May, we had affixed the seal of Erie County. So, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to have us add that to the record tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I know we don't do this, but I just feel obligated to. Mr. Lee, I agree with you. Actually, on the, on the fact that everything reported, we've already discussed, most of it came right out my mouth. The reason I feel obligated to respond though is, this is, this is County Council chambers. And we're not going to let the administration come in here and get on the high horse about anything, because the fact of the matter is, in 2015, I came upstairs and said, tear it down. In 2016, I came upstairs and said, tear it down. In 2017, I said, tear it down. In 2018, I said, tear it down, and you come down in 2019 and say that you did your due diligence and, and you say it in such a manner, as if the County Council hadn't done theirs. The response in 2015, to your point, was to put up a for sale sign without even discussing it with this body. Took it down, put it back up, without even discussing it with this body. I came up, the County Executive said, we need to work together, we can't do anything without it, if you don't do anything. So come in here and get on the high horse, like, like we're just spending taxpayer dollars. That ain't it. And I do agree also, although these recommendations that came from the subcommittee on which I served, because what we didn't do before is, is put it in writing, in a comprehensive manner. I came up, I said, we got five, six years, we spent over a quarter million dollars, it costs us $500,000 to tear it down. She didn't want to tear it down. So don't come here, in this chamber, and act like we didn't do our due diligence. I do agree with you though, there's nothing new that hasn't been learned and I figured, we didn't know because the communication is so, for whatever reason, I own it, are part of it, I guess, but, but I figured that we had a facilities, you know, assessment and that's something that we wanted in the record as well. And we would appreciate the administration and when this body does their, comes together and we discuss it as a committee of the whole, then we'll have a response to, you know, whether we tear it down or not. But we appreciate everything, all the work that you and the administration have done towards resolving that matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Any other comments? If not, let's get on with the business.
Mr. Chairman, move to Table Ordinance Number 26.
Okay.
Moved by Dr. Faust, seconded by Carol Lowell, the table ordinance, number 26. Roll call on the table, Mr. Horton. Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Move to amend tonight's agenda by making second readings of ordinances number 27 through and including ordinance number 31.
Second. Moved by Dr. Faust, seconded by Mr. Horton. Comments on the change to the second reading? No comments? Roll call. Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance number 27 and title only, please. The second reading of ordinance number 27, 2019, 16th, 2019, General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $71,270 for release of restricted automation fees in Clerk of Court's office.
So moved.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Comments? Roll call. An ordinance 27, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Mr. Clerk, second reading of ordinance 28, title only, please. The second reading of ordinance number 28, 2019, 17th, 2019, General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $254,783 for release of restricted funds to County Record Improvement Fund.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Horton. Comments? Roll call. An ordinance 28, Mrs. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance 29, title only, please. The second reading of ordinance number 29, 2019, 18th, 2019, General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $25,227 for release of restricted automation fees and register of wills.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Horton. Any comments? Roll call. An ordinance 29, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowell?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Next, second reading of ordinance 30, title only. The second reading of ordinance number 30, 2019, first 2019 Public Health Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation for a reduction of $5,782 in grant money, funds for mosquito-borne disease control.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mrs. Fatika, seconded by Mr. Anderson. Comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanted to make a comment, because this has come up earlier, just so the public knows what we're doing here. This reduction, this is, this is not a reduction in the program and we are not reducing any services that have been provided to Erie County either last year or this year. Essentially, this is that we had anticipated, or I should say, the Health Department had anticipated the need for more funds in this particular program, which were not needed and went unused, so we have to go back in and reduce the appropriation by that amount because it's, it's funds that were unused. So this is not a reduction in services. I want to make sure that everyone knows that that's clear. This is not a saying that we have more or less of the mosquito-borne situation, it's just a, a technical feature that we have to do to make sure that the budgets stay in line. So I just wanted to, to point that out so everyone was aware, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
An ordinance thirty, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Second reading of ordinance number thirty-one, and title only, please.
Second reading of ordinance number thirty-one, 2019, fifth, 2019, library fund budget, supplemental appropriation of fifteen thousand dollar donation for summer programming and staff.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Faust?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Horton. Comments? Roll call.
An ordinance thirty-one, Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Dr. Faust?
Without objection, move to approve all the sale of parcels, which are items F through N on our agenda tonight, according to the index numbers listed in our agenda.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust, seconded by Mrs. Law. Comments? Roll call on changing the agenda for approval of all the parcels.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Next is reappointment of Charles Casey, the four-year term.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
This is nothing against Charles Casey.
Let's get it on the floor first.
He's done an excellent job, but because his term does not expire for seven months, I'm going to be voting no on this swing.
Fine, you have a motion to put her on the floor?
Got to get it on the floor first.
Have a motion to put her on the floor? If not, it fails. Thank you. Any other comments from anyone?
Mr. Chairman, move to adjourn.